Move faster than me.
All right, you're live now.
Right. I'd like to bring to attention the regular meeting of the Summers Board of Selectmen. Today is Thursday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And let's start off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Regards to a roll call, Selectmen Bill Myers on my right, Selectman Bob Schmidt on my left. We also have CFO Mike Maranaccio on my right and Assistant Director Finance Brian Whissenger. And in the audience, we have Todd Rowland, Director of Public Works, Don Dan Parisi, Land Use Director Dave McCaffrey, Director of Veterans Affairs, Allison Maynard, Human Services Director, Glenn Reynolds, Emergency Management Director. And then we have a few guests as well, of course, Ralph Williams, who is a member of the Summers Board of Finance and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we have Pat Loftus from the Cemetery Commission. We have Colin Reedy, who's spoken with us two as before. That's about it for now. Thank you. So we have time for public comments. Anyone make any public comments this evening? Mr. Williams.
I used to sit down. Ralph Williams, forty-two, Springfield Road. And despite your introduction, I'm speaking. I'm not here on behalf of the Board of Finance or the Zoning Board of Appeals. At your meeting last month, gentlemen.
I can't, I can't hear.
It's on, yeah, you just got to just.
Take it in your mouth.
At your meeting last month, for a second time in as many years, this board chose not to reappoint an incumbent member of the zoning commission without any indication that those members had not desired to reappoint. What's more, in neither case, either twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, did the board actually include the subject matter on its agendas. This last time, it handled it through the, through the motion to add urgent matters, which strikes me as the same kind of misuse of that, that subject, of that tactic, as Mr. Keeney correctly called on the predecessor board when his colleagues used it to try to change, change the manner of the town's administration. It's entirely within the board's power to appoint or not appoint anybody when their terms come up, because that's not my question. But indisputably, the zoning commission is the single most powerful, and I would argue consequential, of the town's appointed boards. And for you to have made a decision, whether it's a slow-rolling purge or a desire to change the nature, the makeup, the mission of the commission, it's not something that should be done through a parliamentary sleight of hand. It should be discussed openly. It should be a matter of board policy. I have no, I'm not here as I, as either a cheerleader for Pedro Sees, who you did not reappoint in twenty twenty, or Jill Cottlin last month. But if the board is going to, if this board is going to change the nature of the commission, at least put it on the agenda so people know that it can be discussed and have an open and forthright discussion instead of rubber stamping the matter. I think otherwise, it's deceitful, it's unseemly. As, as you, all of you know, my single biggest concern with, with town government is that it conducts affairs openly, forthrightly, and discusses matters in the light, clear light of day. As I said, not resort to parliamentary sleight of hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Please state your name and your address, please.
Colin Reedy, eleven sixteen Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm in, I'm here in regards to the appointment.
I can't hear, please.
I am here in regards to the appointment of Patricia Loftus to the Cemetery Committee. I want to start by reading the letter. I want you to know that six months ago today is when my son died. Exactly two months after he was buried, the meeting for this letter happened. Only my son's grave was mentioned, was discussed, was sanctioned. One grave north of my son's grave was discussed for further discussion later. So we have set a rule through the Cemetery Committee, so I get this letter. It has come to my attention, come to the attention of the Cemetery Committee that an extensive memorial garden display has been created surrounding the headstone carrying the names of members of your family. We suggest that you familiarize and perhaps other family members with the rules and regulations presently in force, which are enclosed. The rules you might wish to review are filed on pages seven, eight, under plants and trove, eternal life, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-two, and fifty-four. Most of the rules and regulations are also posted at the rear of each cemetery on large commercially-prepared signs, including new west, and on the town west side under the tab for cemeteries. Due to the number of items out of compliance, the safety hazards that they may cause are landscapers when they are string trimming and mowing, they require that all items, including the concrete bench, mulch, wind chimes, two or more solar-powered lights, fourteen lights count, strings of solar-powered LED B lights, three hours of today, ornamentation too extensive to count, two plastic storage tubs of supplies, two bricks to top the tubs, and any and all other decorations be removed by October thirty-first, which is, is the time period of our fall cleanup. All cleanup will be at your expense if you choose to leave it be on this deadline. The best part, please understand that we are not trying to dictate how you mourn your family. This is town property upon which you have right of burial. Only pay no property taxes as you would for private property. We in turn have a responsibility to all members of the community, and especially to those who have families or friends buried within our cemeteries, to have a safe, calming, pleasant, and healing experience. If you wish to have a memorial to your family members beyond what our rules allow, we suggest that one such garden memorial be created on private property where designs and quantity are pleasing to those who maintain it. If you have any questions, our address is below. Written response or questions may be addressed to the Summers Cemetery Committee. My response to that was finally made to everybody on September twenty-sixth. No response. September turned into November, I went to the meeting.
Could you say that again, what you just said about September twenty-sixth?
Is when I sent my first email.
Okay.
In response to this letter, which I just won't even get into. We've already discussed how rude and untrue and inappropriate it was. So there is some mysterious list of seven more graves that, from my understanding, I can't get what these seven graves are, I've asked multiple times. Some of them, and I know one of them, have been out of compliance for over two years. Mine, only two months. My questions have been all along, and let me get back to the meeting. When I went to discuss my concerns with the committee, November fourteenth, I believe it was, at the monthly meeting, when I spoke, Patricia cut me off multiple times.
You're talking with the chairman?
Absolutely. She rolled her eyes, she flipped her hands like an, I don't care at one point. I sent you guys, there was video, there was audio. You can't deny this crap happens, because it happens. You can't say she brought the good meaning, because she doesn't. When she's given opposition, she's rude and nasty. The government did me wrong, did my family wrong, did my son's friends wrong, the government. A government official of this town, not an employee, an official. So I have been spending the last four months.
Who are you referring to?
Patricia. She is the government. She acted in the capacity, whether she had it or not, she acted in the capacity of the town of Summers Government. The town has spent the time mitigating what she has done, and at no point has tried to make it better with me. You guys, the Cemetery Committee, Patricia herself, you've got town employees jumping through hoops trying to make it better. They didn't break it, they shouldn't have to make it better. So within the meeting, she cut me off multiple times. I asked my question. I want to know why the letter was so personal. There's no denying that this letter was extremely personal. I want to know why I was singled out, and there is no doubting that I was singled out, because there are these mysterious graves that were supposed to get talked about, sanctioned, some of them there for years, but here we are, me. And these four emails, if not five, have gone to Patricia requesting why the letter was so personal and why I was singled out. In the meeting minutes, she put "singled out" in quotation marks. See, audacity, I was singled out. Every step of the way, she has done me wrong. And here we are, four months later. It has taken four months, five meetings, multiple emails, FOI complaints, FOI requests, to get here, because an official of this town could not stand up to what they did and answer the question. My right, as a citizen who has been wronged by the government, has the right to be here and has the right to know what the hell happened. It shouldn't have taken this long, and I will stand firm, you have no business putting her back on this committee. She has done a very poor job at this whole thing. She stepped out of bounds. I don't care if she's been talked to, I don't care. She has continued to avoid solving this problem. She has avoided it, she has run from it, she has lied in town meeting minutes by saying I did not give her an opportunity to answer my questions when she had an entire meeting after I spoke, an entire meeting. She put that into the meeting minutes, along with the quotation marks around "singled out." So you know how I feel, I'm quite sure you're going to continue to put her on a board. I know it's hard to put people on boards, I get that, but she has no business on this one.
Thank you, Ms. Reedy. As you know, at our last meeting on the fifteenth of December, we asked Ms. Loftus to come to this meeting and respond to some of the issues that you raised at the December fifteenth meeting, and we'll hear from her.
But it's embarrassing that this.
We'll, we'll hear from her in a couple of minutes. She is on the agenda.
Four Bridges Road, member of the Cemetery Committee for two, two years, and I've known Pat that time and more, as a member of CERT, and that's been like ten years. Mrs. Reedy.
Did you direct your staff?
Just, you speak to us.
I want to apologize publicly and personally for your extreme distress and I did letters that you received. I was not able to go to that meeting because I was recovering from surgery, and so I felt compelled to come to this meeting. And I've known Pat, as I say, for many years, and we are volunteering to these committees that we belong, commissions that we belong to, and it's very difficult to get people, and we're just ordinary people that don't know much about the committees that we're asked to be on. And we learn, it's a learning curve. They needed a space filled, so I went on it, and I got to know what it was like, and I'm learning more and more. And I learned how sensitive this can be, this situation, things like this. I've had my own personal situation in our family, too, and the fact is, it's so hard to decide how to approach these things, and we do the best we can. I'm, I'm just learning, and Pat has been there longer, she's been the longest of all the people that are there now, and I feel that she should stay, because we're trying the best we can. Her letter, I felt, was factual, and that's where she was coming from, and I understand that. She was giving the facts. Mrs. Reedy, I think, felt differently, of course. She had just lost Jonathan, her son, in July, and I can understand that. But I'm just trying to show a different perspective on this and say that we need people like Pat who are willing to volunteer, and the rest of us, we're learning as we are. And we want to try to be sensitive to these things and get more clarity on what our jobs are in these, in these, in our boards. So that is where I'm coming from, okay? And if Pat goes, I'm going to have to go, because I just feel that this is the way I, I, you know, I, she has the most, she has the most experience, and I think that going forward, we've learned a great deal about this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Lebeck. Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Could you state your name and your address, please?
Jeffrey Cross. Does this say mine?
Yes.
I didn't think so.
Okay. Jeffrey Cross, eleven sixteen Enfield Street. I just wanted to make a quick comment in regards to the letter and what has, and how that letter's been described as factual. It was not factual, or let me put it this way, it did not completely state all the facts of the decorations or anybody else. Again, the point we're trying to make is that this was a very personal letter, not a factual letter, and it was directed specifically towards my wife and her decorations and not about all the other issues in regards to the rules of the cemetery, not. The letter indicated various points of the cemetery rules that she felt were being violated. I would recommend that you review those rules that she specifically stated. They did not, those issues at hand did not violate those rules, or at the least, those rules are old and outdated and not valid to the issues at hand. In other words, what she stated in the letter was not factual. By specifically indicating Rule one, two, three, four, the, the issues at hand did not violate those rules, and those rules were inadequate for what the intent was. Now, if somebody's been on that committee for as long as they have, you'd think somebody might review the rules and update them, if necessary, especially in these days of solar-powered lights that will allow decorations to be seen in the evening. Now, the one point that she really, that really situation, is that a pleasant environment for all. My son's grave was the most pleasant and inviting stone in that cemetery. So I think you need to get, and I think the members of the Cemetery Committee had better get their facts straight and review their own rules in regards before they start sending out letters accusing people of violating. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is Presentations by the First Selectmen. Got a few things I want, notices I wanted to mention, information that's occurred, and some other items as well. First of all, as a result of the President signing the Omnibus Appropriations Bill a few days ago, the Summers Water Pollution Control Authority of Town of Summers will be receiving nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant in Somersville. This is something that Mr. Parisi was involved with, with regards to requesting the funds, along with the Chairman of the Commission, Steve Getman, and I think we're very fortunate to receive those funds, and just want to make sure people were aware of that. And I think the upgrades will occur over the next, probably twelve to fifteen months. Next item I wanted to announce is the public meeting that's going to be held on the thirteenth of this month at the Senior Center. The purpose of the public meeting is to roll out, to be the first rollout meeting for, with regards to the, to design a prospective community center. This is an opportunity for members of the community to hear about what the proposed center might look like, should it be approved, to hear about the background as to why it was thought to be important to propose to begin with, and to hear about what kind of recreational activities it'll make available to the town and expand the current senior center opportunities. That meeting is going to be at the Senior Center on the seventh, on the thirteenth, at nine o'clock in the morning, that's a week from tomorrow.
During the weekday?
Yes, during the weekday. We also have a meeting, we also have a meeting scheduled for the following Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the seventeenth of January, at the Town Hall at six PM in this room. So people can either go to the nine o'clock meeting a week from tomorrow on the thirteenth or on the seventeenth at six PM in this room to hear the same presentation and to be able to ask questions and get answers and get, and for us to receive additional information beyond the survey that was responded to several months ago. And regards, I must also say that the survey results are now posted on the website with regards to what the information is that we receive from over, I think, seven hundred responses to the survey. Also, I want to mention the priority projects, we're going into a new year this year, two thousand twenty-three, and I want to mention some of the priority projects that this town will be addressing in the next several months. One, of course, is the community center, and in that regard, we do have a referendum scheduled for May sixteenth, when the town will get to decide whether or not they want a community center. Another project that's important here is the Somersville Bridge, which is basically repaired, the west side wall, walkways over the water, some improvements to the, the bridge itself, and this is a project that has been in the wings for over ten years now, we've received funding long ago, and Dan Parisi will make a few comments about that later on this evening. Another project that we want to get off the ground is the intersection of Route one ninety and eighty-three, right out here, center of town. It's a, be a DOT project, the town will be heavily involved, and of course, the primary focus is to reduce traffic delays and improve safety at that intersection. Another project is the Somersville Mill redevelopment site. This is what we're trying to accomplish, is putting together an exclusive development agreement with a developer. We have two developers that we're looking at right now, and we expect to make some significant progress on that project as well. And then, of course, one of the big issues that we've been addressing for months now has been EMS service delivery to staff, and this is something, of course, the board's been very involved with, and we hope to get some kind of resolution to those issues related to that subject. That's the la, that's the last of my announcements.
Just a question on the, um, community center?
Yes, go ahead.
I know we discussed the last meeting, kind of the timeline and things for it.
Right.
This January thirteenth to January seventeenth meeting, we're trying to get feedback from the community, I assume, is this part of the feedback process?
Well, this is, this is part of the discussion process. I mean, we've, we've submitted a survey, we've got responses, we've, as a committee, we've tried to respond to those responses in working with the design and engineering outfit that we're working with, to come up with something that we think meets the needs of the community.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, what would be the step right after that? So we meet on the seventeen, the thirteenth to seventeenth, what's the next step? Why not?
Go ahead, Todd. Todd Rowland has been intimately involved in this project.
Todd Rowland, Director of Public Works. The step after that, we're getting public input at these two meetings. We have a, we have a, a design that we've worked on and come up with that we think will meet the needs of, of what the public is asking for. We're going to hold these two meetings, get their input, see if we've missed anything, and see if there's anything we need to tweak, and then our hope is that we then go to find the design and get some process improvements from our architects for our February timeline to start working on the bond package.
Okay, so I guess my question is, when, when does this come in front of this board? Like, when do we get public feedback?
It would be after the seventeenth meeting.
So we would then hold a public meeting, and we'd get comments from the public as well at that time?
To discuss the project.
Well, I mean, I guess my question is, I mean, we're the decision-makers, the board. I know there's kind of an ad hoc group of town employees, the First Selectmen's been involved, and several others, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we're the decision-makers. I mean, I've seen nothing. I mean, I've seen no design, I have no idea of cost, I have no idea, honestly, I don't know anything. I, I didn't even know the survey results were posted until I just heard that a few minutes ago, so I'm just wondering at what point. at what point, um, I mean, I'm interested to hear the public feedback, though. I don't know if I can make the thirteenth. I think I can make the seventeenth. I mean, I want to hear the public feedback.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if the, if this board wants to have another hearing, have, or have a hearing after the public comment, we would do that probably following week, depending on your schedule. Now you're meeting weekly, now, yes, who will you go through the process?
Who's taking the comment, I guess, though, at the thirteenth to the seventeenth? I mean, who's receiving the feedback?
The, uh, we're using the architect to describe everything essentially, but we'll have personnel there taking comments from, of these meetings for the, I guess, the most resounding concerns, I guess you would say. And then we'll collate that, the architect will collate that, as she has at the main outset of the time.
Okay. And who has the original survey data? Like, the actual individual responses, the seven hundred and fifty individual responses that came in?
I think Allison has access to that.
Okay. I'll connect with her. I want to review the actual, I don't want to just look at the summary, I want to actually look at actual individual surveys.
Thirty-two pages of comments.
Yeah, thirty.
Yeah, it's perfect. That's it. Because that stuff's very helpful, too. Instead of, just, summary's good, but I want to see original.
Well, and as you know, I mean, we did the summary just because the comments are varied, and we can't, it's hard to boil them down.
No, I'm interested to see what you have. I just, I haven't seen anything. Like, I'm, I have no idea what is coming. So.
Well, we'll share that, by the way.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks for your work on it.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Dave wanna, did Dave wanna?
Dave, did you want to say something?
I, just a quick, uh, question from the public, I guess. Uh, I'm just curious, you mentioned, uh, Selectmen Meyer, about the, uh, the surveys that went out across the town. And I know that I've, I've heard from a lot of folks, they're hoping to see a public display of those comments, to see what the general consensus of the town has.
Yeah.
Before you go and have all these other meetings.
Right.
That's just a quick question.
Thank you. That, that is on the town website.
And Facebook.
And Facebook.
Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No, I'm definitely very interested, too, to see what the temperature of the community is. I don't know, kind of where people sit. I think the survey's helpful for that, is one to, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Agreed.
Good. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, boards and commissions, appointments and resignations. First item on here is the appointment of Pat Pio to be a full member of the planning commission with a term to end on the twenty-second of December, two thousand twenty-six, as well as to appoint him as a, the conservation commission representative from the planning commission. Term again to, in this case, to terminate on twelve twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. So that's the first item we have up for.
Okay. We just, we just need a motion?
Consideration, yeah, we need a motion for both of those. One motion would do it, that's what we think.
Do you want to make a five, or a two? It doesn't matter.
You can go ahead and make it.
Okay. I make a motion, um, to appoint Pat Pio to a full member of the planning commission, um, for the term expiring twelve twenty-two, twenty twenty-six, and to appoint him as the planning commission's liaison or conservation representative for the term expiring twelve twenty-two, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's my motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motions say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is, uh, Pat Loftus's reappointment to the cemetery commission with a term to expire twelve twenty-two, two thousand twenty-six. Pat, you could please address the, uh, the board here with regards to some of the issues that have been raised in the past that, uh, of concern with regards to the commission and your, uh, actions on the commission.
Make sure you use the microphone, Pat.
Get close to the microphone. You have to, uh, speak into it.
It's just gonna make a lot of noise when I move.
No, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it.
Keep, keep, keep moving it, because they need to get closer to you, please. Just move it closer.
What's your question?
Just move it closer to the microphone. So there were some questions raised at, at, at our prior Board of Selectmen meeting on the fifteenth of December, which I think you're aware of, and you were asked to inform us of your responses.
I wasn't asked to bring any materials with me, but I did.
Okay. Well, could you tell us what you got?
All right. Uh, each of you has a packet with a letter that was read aloud. Um, I am not allowed to do personal things. I have to defend the town. And the only way to defend the town is to use the rule booklet that is provided to us and has been approved by Board of Selectmen in the past, not you three gentlemen, because there haven't been any updates. Uh, last spring, I did propose to the committee that we begin looking at the rule book. Uh, we wrote a mission statement. Uh, we started talking about putting in a variety of different, um, not just in the rule book, but committee-wide. Um, one of them being, as far as the rule book goes, instead of having the formal pages in front, which are the type of things that either the state of Connecticut has dictated, or the Department of Health specifically, um, that type of thing is really directed at funeral director, not at an individual. It might be something they would want to know in the future. But when they come in Brian's office to purchase right of burial, they don't know that that's what they're doing. They think they're buying a plot of land that's been, is owned by them, and it really isn't. It's owned by the town, and it's administered by the town. And only people such as the complainants, who are trustees of another cemetery, would have that background information. So we really do need to educate the public, and that was one of the reasons why we were in the process of rewriting the, reorganizing and rewriting the rule book when this incident came up. But the rules that are in there are the ones that we're allowed to defend.
So have you finished rewriting these?
Oh, no.
No, okay. I just, so these are the ones, the ones that we have are the ones that you used?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, when this was written, I'm not even sure that solar lights were available. I know that we had an issue with some things with metal garden hardware and stringing a battery pack of lights to us, probably because either solar were very expensive at that point, or they had not been developed well. As far as answering any of the complaintant's issues, any email that I send, I send to the committee, and I send, I make sure that Brian C C. on it. So if there are any questions, those questions were probably embedded in other emails.
And you want to explain what Brian's position is?
Well, he's the liaison between you both and the committee.
Very good. Thank you.
Right now, we don't have a job description as to what that actually means. We don't really have a job description of what the committee is supposed to be doing. That has also been discussed at a meeting back in November, I think, on the twenty-ninth.
You're saying the commission doesn't have a mission?
We have a mission statement, and that will go in the new booklet.
But you don't have what?
Job description for what the committee is responsible for, as opposed to what the business office is responsible for. There doesn't seem to be anything in writing.
The actual formal charges for what the, the committee is, is charged, charged to do.
That's something we're working on.
Yeah, we, we're working on it. Um, the cemetery committee, um, is supposed to put something together and present it. Um, I don't know if it's going to be at the January meeting. I assume it will be, but I, I haven't seen anything yet, so.
That's the start of it.
All right. Ryan, do you mind if I quote what you wrote to us on November eighth?
Okay.
Go ahead. Uh, it just said, it, it just, this was something that we received from Mr. Wissinger on number eight. And, uh, he, just had a very good conversation with you. And, uh, he says that, um, "I'm not going to dwell on the sins of the past, only ask that you do not be, they not be repeated in the future. The committee should never, uh, should never take action in such manner to reach out to the lot owners directly or individually. This matter should have been handled in a much more professional way. We could have treated an ally with the mother instead of an enemy." And, uh, it just leaves, you know, we're hearing, uh, Mrs. Reedy, you know, with her concerns. Now, we have concerns here by Brian, too. And it's just, since I wasn't involved in any of these conversations, it just, it, it seems like that she was not treated well. And, uh, I don't know. I mean, I wasn't at that meeting. But that's what she's saying. We've got somebody else that's kind of neutral in this, I think, Brian, and saying also that things could have been done better. What's your take on it, then?
Well, Brian was not at the November meeting either.
Yeah, I understand that.
Uh, I tried to remain almost silent because the complainant twice told me, "Do not apologize to her," because anything I said would be fake. So I didn't. At one point, I tried to answer one of her questions, and she told me to stop talking. So I did, and I just kept taking notes. And I'll have to look back.
Yeah, I think that this is, uh, from my perspective, this is sort of a lessons-learned opportunity, and that in the future, more empathy could be expressed by the commission and, uh, possibly more sensitivity in dealing with families who recently lost a loved one.
Did anybody else, um, besides you and on the cemetery committee make any comments about, uh, the concerns that were raised, or did the rest of them just sit there and say nothing?
I had gotten a phone call from our section just before the middle of September, telling me that I really needed to go to New West and take a look at it. It's very.
Dave McCaffrey, you want to step forward and speak at the table here?
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I understand. I just, I was just asking if anybody else besides yourself made any comments, you know, that evening than when she first came, and that you were saying that she just basically interrupted you and did not want to hear from you. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but you also need to have some background.
Okay.
Um, at the September meeting, I presented photographs. You have packets with photographs, same photographs.
Yeah, I just, I just got it tonight, about, just, just before the meeting.
Mm-hmm. And I showed those photographs to the committee to say that they were appalled by what they saw would probably be pretty accurate. I asked permission to write a letter designating rules out of the packet that were out of compliance.
Sure.
And they voted yes. The, um, the rules are slightly out of date. Yes, there's no mention of solar, and there's no mention of.
Sure.
Fake flowers, and some of them were minutia. But when you block a landscaper from mowing by putting in a large pad of, well, I would think would probably be pine bark mulch and a bench, which appeared to be concrete, but I don't know if it was. I didn't touch it.
Yeah, I, I see that in the pictures here.
You know, then you're impeding work, which means you're probably have to spend more on landscapers because the work takes longer and they try to.
Yeah, you've got to get off the machine and almost do it by hand, right?
Exactly.
And does something like that usually, uh, need some kind of consultation in advance?
With.
With a bench, for instance?
I, I have never had anyone come to us and say, "Can we put in a bench?"
But a bench has been put in without?
Without.
Without permission?
Notification, without permission.
They have.
You should also know that the information that I was given originally was the burial was in January. Apparently, it was in July instead, which, of course, shrinks that timeline considerably. Had I known that it was July, I still would have taken photographs. I still would have gone to the committee. But I also would have added, "Do we write a letter now, or do we write a letter in?"
Four or five months away, yeah.
Whatever timeline at that point would be appropriate. But that wasn't the information I had.
And, uh, are you confident that, I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm just asking, that, that the rules that you have, as much as even they're outdated, but has the cemetery committee been consistent in applying those rules, you know, let's say, in the last year or so, in how they're enforcing them, in terms of how they're responding to any violations of those rules?
When I have driven or walked through our cemeteries, if I have a chance to speak to someone and ask, "What do you like, what don't you like, what can we improve on?" One of the things they do say is that, "I wish some of this stuff would go away."
Okay, but I'm not, I'm asking now, I'm not about.
He's just, he's just asking whether or not.
I'm just asking if there's been a consistency in terms of applying the rules. In other words, I wanted to know that, that, that everybody has had the same type of expectations that Ms. Reedy has had with her, with her grave, and that, and that's, that's what I'm looking for. In, in other words, you applied the rules to her just like you did to everybody else?
I would certainly hope so. Uh, it's somewhat out of our hands. If you go to, on the second or third page, you'll see the cemetery cleanup, uh, sandwich board. All of our rules, whether it's online, hard copy, on a sign, or on the sandwich board, it says, "Please remove personal items. Anything left behind will be disposed." According to our rules, we don't have to notify anyone when we clean the cemeteries.
Mm-hmm.
But we put out time.
Right. But I think the question is, has Ms. Reedy been singled out enforcement, uh, for enforcement purposes versus other families who have put things on their graves?
This was the first time that I've ever been involved in writing a letter. I was told very shortly after that, it was after Board of Selectmen meeting, Mr. Wissinger told me, "Do not write any more letters." But I don't know how long Mr. Wissinger has been working here, eight, ten years?
Almost ten years.
Ten? How many letters, if I may ask, how many letters have you written?
Uh, to individual lot owners?
Yes.
None.
How many people have you spoken to in person or made phone calls to?
Phone calls to? None. Um, in person, only people who have come in and complained, and there's probably three, four dozen, um, over the ten years. And those are people who come in to complain about something in the cemetery. And so I've spoken to them directly. Um.
And before him, me, I've spoken to them directly, too.
Yeah.
Dave McCaffrey, uh, might have a few comments. Like, Dave's a member of the cemetery commission, and, uh, state your name and your address.
Uh, David McCaffrey, two forty-nine, Ninth District Road. And I'm addressing the board, uh, in my capacity as a member of the cemetery committee. And, uh, I just wanted to add additional information, uh, in the sense that anything that the committee does, we, we address the entire committee, and we make a vote on it. And it was not a single lot. I, my background with the cemetery committee is that I've been with the cemetery committee more than fifteen years, but I've only been a voting member for about two years. And so I'm very familiar with the past practices.
I mean, you've sort of been an ad hoc member, uh, without voting privileges.
Correct.
Because of your experience and knowledge and, uh.
I'm, I'm very familiar.
Involvement with the veterans' graves.
With the veterans' graves. And, uh, and so as such, I'm, you know, I've attended many, most, almost all of the meetings over these years. And I can tell you that in the early days, letters were received, and they would go directly to the committee for review. They didn't, they were not intercepted by the finance department, and they may be now. So letters were often sent. We sent the same letter to every person that we identified as being out of compliance with the instruction manual, the rules book. And, you know, all we would do is we would, uh, ascertain, uh, identify the individual, what items were out of compliance. That was the only thing that was tailored. Otherwise, well, everything was taken right out of the rule book. So there was no singling out of anyone. Uh, we would identify graves are out of compliance because of safety issues primarily. Uh, you know, there's a lot of different issues that would, uh, incur that would restrict the landscapers from being able to go through and clean up the grave areas. Uh, people would put down all sorts of things, whether it was, you know, pedal rock, and landscapers would run over that, and that would be misses. So there's a lot of different reasons why we would send. So, there's a lot of different reasons why we would send out letters. And many members of the cemetery committee routinely go out to the cemeteries, all three cemeteries, to identify discrepancies in the rulebook. And then it's during those meetings that we identify and send out the letter. So, when Pat sent out this letter, my understanding was she used a similar letter that was, it looked very, it was very fact based. You know, I'm a military person, and so the letter, I thought, was very, very good, because it identified all of the areas that were out of compliance. When, when a person services a lot, they are required to sign an agreement, understanding that they're complying with the rules. They're given a copy of the, of the rules. They sign a piece of paper that indicates that they're going to be in compliance with those rules. And so this letter is just a reinforcement that they're out of compliance, and please make the corrections, so that we can make the cemetery safe for all people that visit. So, that, I just want to make an emphasis that I reviewed the letter. I thought the letter was appropriate. Perhaps it could have been delayed a little bit, but, you know, factually, it was factual. It followed all the rules and the guidance, and so I, I think the letter was appropriate. Perhaps a little too early, but otherwise very appropriate.
Do you, do you think there's anything in the rules that address the timeliness of such letters, to give a family a certain amount of grace time, having lost a loved one?
Right, so I, you know, I was unaware of the, the incident, you know, I just, I knew that the grave was identified and brought to our attention. I did not know the situation that caused all those items to be placed on the grave. It was just out of compliance. I did not know the background as to why the, why the.
It's unfortunate.
And I think that's the, I think that's the whole encompassing issue, and to your point about previous letters. I know in the almost ten years that I've been here, I've never seen a letter. If any had been written, we don't have any documentation of it. Something like that would be FOI-able, so we would need copies of things like that. So, you know, whatever happened in the past, like I said, in the letter that I wrote, is, we don't want to repeat the sentence of the past. Let's move forward and find a better way to do things, because I always think there's a better way to do things. Even just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean it's the right way. The rules obviously need updated as well. But, so to that point, you know, knowing the information ahead of time, probably, to both points, probably would have delayed it, and, and we wouldn't be in the, you know, where we're at right now. I, I just, like I said, I think there was a better way to handle it altogether. And, and the committee working together with the liaisons, with the board, with everybody, and getting, you know, it probably would have come to light, and we probably could have done it better.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, a few things, so. Number one, I mean, I know, and Ms. Lebeck, I mean, I agree with you, I mean.
I, I wish I could hear what's going on.
Sorry, um, usually.
People speak to you, and I can't hear, I have issues, even with hearing aids.
Usually people don't complain about my voice, but I'm getting over bronchitis, so I'm not speaking as loud as I normally do.
You have my ears, you would know.
Sorry, um, I think it's a, it's a big challenge in town for us to find volunteers, and people willing to step forward to serve, you know, on our volunteer boards, on our elected positions, really anywhere, in our fire department, with the CERT team, with our trails commissions. I mean, it, it's hard to find good volunteers and good people. I learned a lot in the last two months. I mean, I think, Ms. Reedy, I think you brought to us a lot of good things to think about. I mean, we've heard from three of the members of the cemetery commission. I know, it sounds like you get appointed, and it's like, good luck figuring it out, you know? And, and I think in some cases, that happens too often in town. And I mean, we've, we've really moved to, to, to give things more structure, you know, to have more written policies, more procedures, more, you know, not relying so much on word of mouth, and, you know, trying to figure things out, because these things happen. I mean, this, this never should have happened to you, you know, and, but at the same time, we have rules, and we need to enforce rules to maintain order. And I mean, I come, everyone knows my background. I mean, I come from a, a life of enforcing rules. And, you know, from writing tickets to anything else you can imagine, and there's always question of interpretation. You know, there's a law, and there's an interpretation of the law. And I mean, the speed limit's a pretty easy one to interpret, but some of the other laws are kind of tricky. And that's why we have lawyers, right? I mean, that's the whole point, lawyers, and they litigate stuff. And I think in this case here, you know, we have regulations. There was a concern brought, you know, by our sexton about a grave. You know, I think there's some question maybe as to the interpretation. I don't know the answer, you know, I don't know what was compliant, what wasn't compliant, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen enough information, I guess, to know that. But I don't think that matters, at the end of the day. I think what matters is, what are we going to do going forward, the process? And I think if we can agree on a good process going forward, I think we just, we all move forward, and we let it go. I mean, but I want to agree on the process. You know, so I mean, number one, I think we owe Ms. Reedy an apology, and it's, I mean, Pat, you said it, I mean, there were a couple of misunderstandings. I mean, there was a misunderstanding about the, um, the date.
Date of death.
The date of death. There was a misunderstanding, I think, about the role of the committee. I mean, there were a whole lot of misunderstandings that just kind of compounded on each other. And then I think on both sides, everybody kind of dug their heels in, and here we are today on January, whatever today is, the fourth, or fifth, or whatever the day is here today. I mean.
Can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
I think the thing is not to throw out the baby with the bathwater, just to move forward. Brian had some good suggestions. We need to make these more up to date, these rules, as to what, and that point also brought with Mrs. Reedy. Our Miss, Mrs. Reedy?
Mr. Ross.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Ross, yeah.
Her husband. And I forget, going forward, we should just move and then change the rules, modernize them as we discussed in that meeting, and.
I think we need to exhibit a little more compassion, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think instead of a hard rule, you broke the rule letter, we should at least reach out and try to find out what's going on first. And if we ever, if we need a letter, the first letter should be a soft letter.
A reminder, like a reminder letter, yeah.
I expected a letter, just, this is our rules, these, we would request that you remove them, and then we would have belonged, but that is not what I got. I got told how we should read and warm, and, and other things, so it was much more than that. And I just want to respond to one thing. When I was speaking at that meeting, I was not allowed to speak. She continually talked over me. She's trying to say she was trying to respond to me. Again, we're going to go back onto respect and things. I shouldn't have been allowed to speak, and then be responding. So, it was more than just misunderstanding.
Well, just, so Ms. Reedy, just a sec, so, so I think, I mean, we heard Mr. Williams bring up a point, you know, about how we post our agendas and things. I mean, we can all do things better, you know? And the problem is, I know just from myself, my personal, as a, as a volunteer elected official, I mean, there's a lot of, I wish I had more time to spend on things, you know, you don't. And, you know, we don't give our boards and commissions really a lot of training on how to conduct meetings, how to, you know, take public comment, and how to, you know, it's just, you know, we, we draw people with different expertise, you know?
For sure.
And a willingness and a caring to help the community. I think what I'm hearing from the committee is, is they're coming from a good place and wanting to maintain order in our cemetery, which I think we all agree on. It can't be a free for all, but at the same time, we need to be respectful and honor people, and understand that people mourn in their own unique ways. And, you know, to an extent, we can dictate what the plot looks like, but we need to be a little bit flexible, you know? And then also compassionate at all times, you know? And again, I mean, I use the example of a speeding ticket, you know? I've written a lot of speeding tickets where people then thank me and say, you know, officer, I know I was speeding, I'm so sorry, thank you, you know?
And she took pictures, the grave marker is there with the date of death, so it personally affects she didn't know it was July.
Well, I just, I think, again, it's, mistakes were made. No one's going to try and defend and say that this was, the system working as it should. I think you've brought to light a lot of very important things, and I think we're going to effect some very good changes. So, don't, I know, like in your comments, you said that you feel nothing's been done. Don't feel that nothing's been done. I think you've actually initiated the overhaul of the complete system. So, I think the opposite is actually true. I think you've actually kind of turned the whole thing on its head, and we're going to make the change. So, don't, you know, don't feel that it just fell on deaf ears and nothing happened.
Exactly, exactly. We greatly appreciated the comments made by Mrs. Reedy at the committee meeting, and following the, her, discovered two things right off the bat, and that was, for future meetings, we will have a public, a public.
Commentary.
Public comment portion, and we also identify the fact going forward that we would create a form letter, a standardized form letter, that one size fits all, and then we'll identify all of the, the potential discrepancies that we can just check off, and so it's a generic form used for all.
Yes. Well, you know, to me, it would be nice, you know, because I was a teacher for thirty-five years, and it didn't matter, you know, who came in front of me, it didn't matter. And I think you have to be consistent, and I think it's really, very, very important is to be consistent. I don't, I don't mean from being firm, you know, I think you guys, that's important too, to be firm. But I really think you have to be consistent. I think it all has to do with tone, you know? And the tone, with somebody that's just lost somebody, a loved one, I think tone is going to have to be, you know, really important, about how you answer and respond to somebody who has, you know, lost a husband or a son, or whoever it is, or, and that's what I think was, to me, seems to be the big dispute here, is how people talk to her. You know what I'm saying? And how she was approached. And I think that that's what you have to work on in the future, is that tone, and how you do that. And then if you're consistently applying the rules in a fair fashion, and you do it in a polite and thoughtful manner, I think this would have been avoided, you know what I'm saying? You might have felt that you were doing that, but obviously Mrs. Reedy didn't think that happened. And so I think that's where, you know what I'm saying, that I, I hope that once you establish the rules, and Mr. Woodinger has pointed out, we need to have a clear set of rules, and then we do it in a firm, fair, and consistent fashion, with some compassion, I think we'll be okay, wouldn't you say, Brian? And then he doesn't have to deal with this, and he, and he's, he's the brunt of it, because he's always getting these irate people coming in that don't feel that they've been treated fairly.
So, I guess, Pat, did you want to say something? Okay, you want to say something, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
I mean, does this all sound good with you? I mean, I, I, what I would like to see, I mean, Ms. Reedy, I've, we've been through this situation before. And how I see this playing out is, you know, we say, you know what, we're going to put our fists down, we're not going to make a reappointment. We lose a very dedicated, longtime volunteer, the whole committee resigns, it's a mess, we've got to try and find people, nobody wants to serve. You know, how are we better? You know what I'm saying? You have a lot of passion, you have a lot of, I think, good insight, I think you offer a lot of value to us, and a different perspective that we don't always hear. Can we channel some of that into the positive change? You know, as opposed to trying to everybody dig in, in who's right and who's wrong, we admit that mistakes were made. I don't think anyone here is going to say there weren't mistakes made in this. Can we channel some of the energy into making the system better, coming up, like we said, with a standard template? I mean, are we good with that?
As long as there's change.
Okay, well, at the end of the day, the board has the authority. I mean, the cemetery commission's mandate in the charter, it says one line. It says there shall be a cemetery commission comprising, I think, of five members. That's it. Everything else, the board gets to decide. So, we decide the scope of the committee, we have to approve the rules, I mean, we have to approve everything. We've traditionally been hands off, because we got about, what, thirty commissions that appoint, that report to us? But I think in this case, Brian's expressed the willingness, the committee has, let's fix it. And I think that can be your lasting impact.
Yeah, I think, I think improvements can be made, obviously, and they will be made in the future. We'll work more closely, the town hall will work more closely with the commission as well.
Are you, I mean, Pat, you're okay with all this? I mean, this sounds fine.
One part of the letter that the complainant was really upset about was the, basically the second page, where I offered some suggestions. In my long line of work, I never try to criticize a student without giving an option for what you could do next.
Yep.
Either improvement on a report or paper, whatever it happened to be. So, the full intent of the, basically the complaint itself, what to offer and out, but it wasn't seen that way.
I think that's the valuable perspective she brings, is kind of the other side of the coin. And I think we're all listening to it, and we're going to make change based on it, you know, so, okay. I mean, I think we're, I think we're all okay then.
Great. I'd like to proceed here with.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the issue is whether or not we're going to be reappointing Pat Loftus to the cemetery commission for a term to end on the twenty-second of December, two thousand twenty-six.
Should I make a motion to reappoint Pat Loftus to the cemetery commission for a term expiring twelve twenty-two, twenty-six?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Tim, I just hope that, Pat, I'd just like to, if we do any, we don't want to have any more Mrs. Readys coming across this in the next year, okay? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an opportunity to add urgent agenda items. Do we have any this evening?
No. The only thing I'd add, though, just in response to Mr. Williams' earlier comments, I think just going forward, just as a matter of policy, all commission board appointments should be listed by name and date on the agenda. You know, I mean, there's really no such thing as an emergency board or commission appointment. And again, it's nothing that's been done intentional, and, you know, even some mundane commissions, you know, we've done that in the past, over the last year.
What you're saying is make, put the name and the, and the term.
Term, on the posted agenda.
And that they're replacing somebody too. We need to know that they're replacing somebody.
Yeah.
Because to be honest with you, I did not realize, when we voted on that last gentleman, you know, that he was replacing somebody.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
So, we'll just, we'll just spell them out. You know, I mean, you saw, I think, last time, I mean, they got the one wrong with me, where Ellison replaced me as well, that I was resigning in the center, there was a mistake on that one also. So, I think, I think we can do a better job, just to make it more transparent, you know?
Okay.
And you're, I mean, yes, so, thank you. But thanks for coming and bringing that as well.
Very good. Thank you. Department of Finance, transfers and appropriations. Do we have any this evening?
Nope.
CFO, finance report.
Uh, just following up on what Sluck McKenney was talking about, the informational meeting, there is a flyer that's going out, it's mailed today, that everybody in, I think every household in town will be receiving either tomorrow or Saturday.
Yeah, that's a flyer announcing the public meeting.
Announcing the dates and the time to the public, so.
On the night.
So, you don't even have to go to the website, where you don't even have to watch this meeting, you can get it in your mail. The other item is, earlier this week, Sluck McKenney, myself, Todd Rowland, and our consultants, our energy consultants, met with two RFP finalists for installing a solar field at our landfill, or our transfer station, the old landfill, which has been capped and covered, and on top of it would be a solar, a solar field, so.
Oh, right, yeah.
We're looking into that. The possibilities for that are just really magnificent. We're looking, maybe it's a couple of years down the road, but if not most, quite a bit of our energy needs will be met through what that solar field will generate, so.
The town, the town will be?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, and, so, again, that's, that's very early on in the process, but we are, you know, we're doing our due diligence, and we have a really good consultants working with us on this, on this.
So, you're thinking two years it would be?
Don't listen to me, I'm only the CFO here, I'm not an engineer.
Well, I was just, no.
I'm thinking that.
It's a competitive process, so.
Yeah, it is.
I was just trying to get a timeline.
Yeah, well, the timeline is really a ever source, so.
Sure.
We did it in.
We, we did it in, we had great consultants, and we put an application in, 'cause you have to have an application to basically get a placeholder for that amount of, of kilowatts that you'd be putting in the system, and for folks adding, says there's a fee that has to be paid, which will be paid by the, the vendor that we, ultimately, this body will choose. Um, so this, it's a process. Um, we, we did an RFP, we rolled down the two finalists, we interviewed them yesterday, um, we had some more questions for them, they have to come back with those questions, and we'll pick a finalist. Once we have that put together, then we'll share it with Board Selectmen to come up for this body, and ask for permission to go forward, which would essentially be, um, awarding it to this one vendor.
Mm-hmm.
And then they go, and they start the, continue the application process with ever-source, which is probably a year, um, nobody really knows.
Now, this is a contract negotiation, correct? This is, it can be a contract negotiation with that vendor, right, in response to the RFP?
Correct. They'll come, we'll come to this, the body with, with, uh, uh, not with occasion.
You have the process.
Okay, well, my, my point is, is this may be something we wanna discuss in the executive session, 'cause it may involve strategy or contract negotiations for the initial...
It also has to go, it should go before the final term, he's gonna have to work at that. Yeah, it's a, it's a lengthy process, so...
Giving you an overview, I'm not gonna give you any details.
Any construction, if, if you get to that point, is some years ago.
Okay. That's, I was just, I was just wondering, you know, just, yeah, thank you.
It would be, uh, probably at least two years.
At least two years? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, another item, um, with regards to what Tim was saying about ALS service delivery to Stafford, um, the finance department is working on, on an updated EMS costing calculation. Um, it's going to be for the past six months, um, um, ac- actual data. Um, financials have changed in that time period, so that'll be updated, the call volumes will be, will be, uh, current, and the billing, uh, information will also be in the same timeframe. Um, and we're gonna apply a few different assumptions, uh, we are waiting on some information from our billing service, so, but we should have that within the next week or so. Uh, will give us a better idea of what we need, um, in terms of, of, of whether or not we're, where we stand in terms of finances.
We'll probably also share that with the Board of Finance, right?
Oh, we certainly will, when we get it, yeah.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, that's good, thank you.
That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
When you start our budget meetings, is it next week?
Two weeks.
Yeah. First budget meeting, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, uh...
Then I have the calendar.
DPW's coming in on the, uh, nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Correct? Yep.
With due respect, I'd like to mention something that's been on my mind for a long time, and it has to do with, um, hearing at these meetings. And, um, we just had a comment there about, uh, let's see, opportunities to add urgent agenda items that I've never even heard from where I was sitting there, okay? And this is not about just me, this is about a lot of townspeople, older people, that somewhere hearing aids, others don't. The hearing aids are not perfect. We need to do something to correct this problem.
So I'll, I'll address that, I'm actually gonna bring it up after the, Mike was done with this thing. Um, we did, um, contract with someone to overhaul all the audiovisual in here. Um, I just got an email yesterday from the company, uh, about ninety percent of the materials have come in. They're anticipating within the next couple of weeks to be able to come in and install everything in a two-day process. Um, it'll be new microphones for board members, it'll be new speakers, that, well, the microphones will be linked to the speakers, they'll be linked to the camera, so that the audio through the video itself will be clearer to hear, because I get comments all the times and complaints all the time that I, I was watching the recording, and I had my volume on a hundred, and I still couldn't hear what was being said, and...
Right.
They're absolutely correct, because if I, I can do the same thing on my laptop all day long, I turn it on to try and review the minutes before I write them, and I can barely hear what's being recorded. Um, so, you're absolutely correct, it's, uh, it's been a known issue, um, we are in the process, we're hoping by the end of January that with budget meetings kicking off, that everything will be state-of-the-art and updated, and that things will be able to be heard and seen better, so...
I appreciate that, Brian.
That is on, that is on the, the tip-top of the list as, as we speak.
Right, I do appreciate it, and I can't believe other towns do this business this kind of way.
Yep.
And wanna appeal to the whole population of the community, it's just not fair.
Yep.
And I appreciate that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
We're well aware that the sound in this, in this room is bad.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Next, next item on the agenda is a presentation of scheduled payments.
Only has my ears.
Presentation of scheduled payments, uh, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the scheduled payments totaling three hundred seventy thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents presented.
Second.
I've, I've reviewed them, discussed them with, uh, Mr. Whissinger's office, and got all my questions answered. So I, I have no, uh, no further questions.
I have none.
Hearing no further comments, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Great. Uh, pending business, uh, we have none this evening. New business, a recommendation to hire Taylor Setzler for the position of prevention coordinator, Allison Maynard, Director of Human Services.
Good evening, Allison Maynard. Yes, so as you are aware, we've been recruiting since October for the position of prevention coordinator, which is a hundred percent funded by our drug-free community grant. Um, Eden Connors, our, uh, youth services coordinator, and I both interviewed Taylor, and we feel like she'll be an excellent fit for the position. She held her bachelor's in public health, um, she's interned with the Wallingford Health Department, um, spent some time with Meredith Core School System, with Meredith Core, um, and we're excited to offer her the position and join our team.
Excellent. Sounds like you found, uh, someone that could fit in very well and...
Appreciate all your effort.
Did you, um, have the resume for the person?
Yeah.
'Cause it wasn't in the packet. I know the individual usually puts the agenda together, was unexpectedly out this week, but...
Right, yeah. Would you like me to email this to you guys, or you want, okay.
Thank you.
I have it here as well, if you'd like a copy.
No, I mean, I think, I think this is great, and I'm excited to see the work that, uh, the Coalition does, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
So we need a motion to, uh...
I'd be happy to make the motion to, uh, hire Taylor, uh, Fessler, is that how you pronounce his name?
Fessler.
Uh, for the position of prevention coordinator, thirty-five hours a week, with an annual salary of fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
What's the start date?
Monday.
She done all the background checking?
Yeah, yeah.
So one day...
Ninth of, ninth of January.
Ninth of January.
And that's okay with you, with payroll and everything?
Yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a half-check for the first week, um...
It's coming out of the grant, correct?
Yeah, it's all grant-funded, um, but it, yeah...
Just have to make sure with the payroll and everything, though, that, okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can accommodate.
Good.
Second, if I didn't already.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to accept the resignation of Walter Topless, Jr. As the town assessor, do you wanna make your comments about that?
Yeah, certainly. Um, Walter is, uh, our full-time assessor, we initially hired him back in, uh, two thousand sixteen. Uh, he then became our full-time assessor in March of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, he's moving on to, as he says here, the town of Weathersfield, uh, for, um, it's a really great opportunity for him. It's a significantly higher salary than he's making here in Summers. Um, I don't wanna mention that number, but it, it's, it's much larger than he's making here. Um, he has the skill set for that, he's also been an assessor in a larger town, uh, so it, we are, you know, we're sad to see him go, but yet he's done a great job in training, um, the assistant assessor, so, this isn't a, assessor is an appointed position by charter. Um, this current term won't, expires in March, so I, I plan to leave it open until April, so that the, whoever succeeds, um, will be, they will start on, on April first as the new assessor. Any interim, um, the assistant assessor will be running things. Um, yeah, in terms of, um, in terms of housekeeping issues, uh, for pension purposes, he is vested. Um, he's got over a thousand hours in his final, in his fifth year, so he is vested, so there, there will be no return or payout for contributions for him. Um, he is gonna have a separation payout of twelve thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Uh, that, that's comprised of a six, of nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-one, and a vacation of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. Um, what we plan to do is there's...
But you said that separation payout's twelve thousand, two hundred and four?
Yeah, it is.
Made up of...
It's subject to change, there's...
It's a plus or minus number, and, uh, we do have, left in that, in that payroll line item of his, we do have plus or minus thirty-six thousand dollars. So there's money in there to be transferred into the separation payout fund to, to make that payout, so...
And we're gonna make the appropriation separately for that payout at the next meeting?
I, I will have a transfer for you, I'm waiting until after his last date, so that I can make sure all sick and vacation is recorded.
And that's just the transfer, I wanna make sure any appropriations made out of that fund are also in front of this board.
Yeah, so it'll come at both times, there'll be a, a transfer request to that fund, and then the request for payout as well, and then, so you can approve that pending the transfer approval by Board of Finance.
Yep, I'm good with that. Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Walter Topless, um, effective...
January seventh.
January seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, requests to, uh, a position for a full-time building inspector. Mr. Parisi's gonna kick this one off. Land use director.
Hi, Dan Parisi, Land Use Director. Um, Mr. Keeney came to me the other day about, um, the position of full-time, position of the full-time building official, chief building official. Um, Brian had printed out some other towns that, that are our size, showing the costs that they're being paid at this time. And looked at a few towns, like Windsor, La Crosse, they have a forty-hour work week, um...
Before you get into that, though, I think, take the background here, I'd just like to...
Okay.
The background is that we have, uh, two current building inspectors, uh, through an agreement we have with the town of Stafford Springs for a total of twenty-one hours a week. Uh, it's working pretty well, I think that both, both those gentlemen will tell the board that, and have told us in the Town Hall, that there's more work than twenty-one hours a week, uh, that's needed, and there's been some concerns in the past about, uh, what happens if those, we don't have a buil- a building inspector on a part-time basis. And the bottom line is, we would be, uh, very vulnerable, uh, with regards to assisting our building community here in town, and the town would lose out as a result, as would the, the building community. So I think the thinking here is that, uh, we need a full-time building inspector, and we've advertised in the past for a part-time building inspector and received no applications, mainly because building inspectors are hard to come by, and we don't know of any building inspector that wants to work part-time when there's full-time jobs available in multiple towns. Uh, so that's the background, so, go ahead.
So, and there was that, Brian had done through costs and everything, I've called, I looked at a few of them with Brian. Some of the people have been there for, if you look at Brookfield, their building inspector's been there for twenty-three years. And his, and his, that he's making now, what he's making now. East Windsor, there's been, uh, he's been there a year. Burlington, he's been there for six years. Ellington, eight years. Southfield, he's only been there for half a year, and that's, he's making that a hundred and five thousand dollars. And we wouldn't have to change any, I, I printed off the job description, position description, which is in your packet. That was on the, it's on the town website, and we wouldn't have to change anything, 'cause it already extends, it's for, uh, status, it's full-time exempt, title's building official, so, we're looking at, we look at the average and the median, maybe looking at like eighty-five, the post is for eighty-five thousand, two hundred thousand.
Depending on experience, right?
Depending on experience, yes.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, it needs to be a competitive, uh...
Yeah, we wanna give it a...
Salary, and, and the fact that we have...
They actually go sign-on bonus also, if you'd like, come up with something, uh, creative in that regard too, so...
Yeah, I've seen that a lot lately, where after the first year, you get half, the second year, you get the second half of sign-on and so forth.
Right, so... Exactly.
You don't get a bonus, but it's paid after you stay here for a certain period of time, so... I've seen that on a lot of postings lately.
But that's, that's an added incentive.
So do we wanna add that, and it kind of...
Yeah, you may want to, you can do all this offline, you don't, you need to do it, yeah, so...
Well, seeing that it might be a good idea, because it's so hard to get a building inspector, correct?
It's hard to get certain jobs now.
Yeah, I mean, you almost have to tackle the person in the street to bring him in, yeah.
And the bottom line is, even though our, our current situation is, is not critical, it could become critical very easily if we're not being observant and proactive, and trying to find a full-time building inspector.
Yep.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I think this is probably the direction we have to go, and I agree, it's hard to find, I think we're gonna have to pay competitively, I mean, I, I'm in agreement with all that. I think my hangup's still, um, I still just haven't set up a plan I'm happy with for land use. You know, I mean, we're adding more time now, you know, we're just, we're adding five more hours. I mean, we had a thirty-hour-a-week building official, now we're going to thirty-five, we just added a part-time clerk, you know, the director position, I mean, the number of hours we're adding into land use, and I just, I, I don't know that I see the return on investment. I mean, I'm not saying I don't see it, but I don't know that I do see it, and I guess I just wanna see a clear plan. I think this issue, single on its own, I think we gotta move forward, I think we gotta be competitive. I think the bigger picture, though, I think that's the discussion we're gonna have with the budget, as far as what we fund next year. You know, I think the building official's definitely one of them, but I'm wondering what else we fund next year, you know, because we keep adding, 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 but...
Well, I can, you've taken into the context the fact that over the last several years, we've lost a town engineer, we've been here for...
Ten years.
Ten, fifteen years. Uh, we lost our town sanitarian, who'd been here for thirty years, so there's a major vacuum in the land use office, and, uh, it's a very critical part of town government, and there's a lot of responsibility, and we need to keep current with providing provided services.
Well, I agree, but I just think that throwing money and people out isn't always the solution. Again, this single issue tonight, a hundred percent in favor of. I think it's the bigger discussion that I wanna have when we do the budget, as far as how many hours are there, how many positions, how many people, what's the workload, what's it look like? Um, we need a building official, no question about it, and I don't think our arrangement with Stafford's sustainable. So, I think for tonight, I think we move this forward, but I think that we have that bigger discussion, and we'd just be ready for it, yeah, you know, with your budget presentation, because I think we have a lot of hard questions this year, I know, at least I am, you know, about, you know, what the workload looks like, and what the staffing looks like, so...
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Um...
What do we do, eighty-five to ninety-five is the range?
Eighty-five to a hundred.
Eighty-five to a hundred?
The proposal.
Brian, what's that gonna fit in as far as our other town staff? I mean, if we say we hired over a hundred...
Be the second highest-paid person in town.
Okay.
Well, if you look at other towns the same size as us... Well, if you look at other towns the same size as us, the, you know, the prices that they're getting for salaries.
I mean, my, my personal recommendation, I, I talked to Dan, mine was, was seventy-five to ninety was what I was saying for a range based on the averages. If we're, uh, we're an eleven-thousand-person town, the average population is ten-four. So, the average salary of that is seventy-four, and seventy-four to ninety, I think is probably a, a good range. You start getting into that hundred, hundred-and-twenty, there was one guy, it was twenty-eight years, I think it was Redding.
Yeah, yeah, eighteen years.
You can't compare Redding.
Right, you can't compare Redding, you're right. And that's where, like, I didn't wanna get into, like, we need to compete with Redding and we need to, you know, Stafford, I think Glenn's been in Stafford for, you know, a million years, so you, you can't compete with those because you're, you're bringing in somebody new. And they might have ten years of experience, who knows, but they still don't have the eighteen, the twenty, the thirty that some, that these top-tier guys have.
But I think we need to have a range that's competitive.
No, you do have to have a range that's competitive. You're absolutely right.
In four months, saying we couldn't find anybody.
Somebody may apply with fifteen years' experience and they just wanna go to a smaller town. I mean, you just need help, so.
Maybe we do eighty, but we may also get a new grad that we just get lucky on, that we wanna start off. Maybe we do like eighty to ninety-five as a range and then we just judge it based on experience. Are we okay with that? Okay.
We have a motion.
Bob, what, what are we doing, eighty-five to ninety-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why it was eighty, eighty-five, ninety?
Eighty to ninety-five.
Eighty to, eighty to ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay.
So, make a motion, we authorize, um, posting of a building, a full-time building inspector position, um, with a starting salary range of eighty to ninety-five thousand dollars, um, depending on experience.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I guess the, the only other question, and I don't wanna put the cart in front of the horse, but I mean, we don't have funding for this, right? I mean, it could be a partial year potentially?
It, it could be. I mean, we budgeted, we budgeted to pay the contract. Um, so, I mean, this would be more than the contract amount. Uh, we could look at where we might have other monies and do a transfer, or we would need an appropriation depending on the hire date. I mean, if we're just now posting it, it might be May or June before we actually hire.
Oh, I agree. Just, it, it's one thing at a time, and I think we just, as the board, have to understand, there's no money for this. And we need the appropriation, we make the hire, but we're tight right now.
The bottom line is, I think we might be able to find it. I guess what Brian's saying.
We, we might be able to, yes. Not gonna make any promises. I have found blood in the stone once, but-
I'm not a big fan of Mike, but, all right, I'm ready to vote.
Well, I'm, I'm confident that Brian can find it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right, one other thing to bring, um, the Maple Street Bridge.
Right.
I had talked to, uh, D O, D O T today. They're having a meeting on Tuesday. Um, so, how to progress with the project?
Next week. This is a follow-up to a meeting we had here, what, two, two months ago.
What needs to be done, the bridge under the digger?
On, on the bridge, we're looking at redoing the abutment. They have to do the one on the downside, downstream side of it. And on that section, they're gonna add a, a walkway on the outside of the bridge to continue, continue the sidewalk up the street. And they're gonna repair both abutments and patch up the bridge as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thi- this is a project for which we received an appropriation almost ten years ago.
Yeah, federal, yeah, a federal grant for that part.
And we're hopeful that that federal grant will cover all the expenses, uh, necessary.
Yes, that's part of the, the process that D O T's gonna discuss on that Tuesday.
Right.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for getting on top of that finally. Ten years seems to be a little bit of a long time to wait, huh?
Yeah.
Luckily, we don't have a safety issue there.
Yeah, exactly.
Next item on the agenda is local traffic authority, uh, the install of Wayfarer signs for the library.
Mr. Rollin. Uh, good evening again. Todd Rollin, Director of Public Works. Our first up request is, uh, just as the first gentleman said, the library board is requesting, uh, library Wayfarer signs. There's pictures in your packet. Just, it's, uh, blue signs that say "library" with a harrow. They're requesting signs on Main Street at the intersection of Ninth District, one on the east side, one on the left, going down Ninth District. Uh, and the other sign that they're requesting is on Ninth District across from Vision Boulevard, pointing up to Vision Boulevard where the library is. Um, so, we are requesting, this has been reviewed by both Department of Public Works and the Resident Troopers Office. Uh, both departments are in favor of this project. Because Main Street is a, a state road, uh, if this board approves this request, we then have to send the request to the, uh, Office of, uh, State Traffic Authority under the Department of Transportation for permission to put signs on Main Street and, and give the approval. Uh, as far as Ninth District Road, that's completely within the review. Um, so, we're requesting the, uh, this board approves this request and allows the D P W to put the sign on the Ninth District Road and make application to the, uh, Department of Transportation's Office of Traffic Authority for signs on Main Street.
Does the Department of Transportation provide the signs if they approve this and we have to buy them ourselves?
Correct.
Install them?
Providing and installing signs, maintaining them.
Good. I'm glad you're doing it, 'cause I've had many people over the years say, I think it's a library. Where is it in this town? No, I'm serious.
Google.
No, but you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I know that, but they just, you know, they-
No, no, you're absolutely right. And the Wayfarer signs, they're, they're more-
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Do we have a motion for this? We have the local traffic authorities, we have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion for the local traffic authority to install Wayfarer signs for the library.
Any further discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, recip, uh, requests.
Uh, C I P requests for the coming fiscal year. Um, do you wanna just go over all of them and do, or do you wanna vote on individually? Uh, there's seven, uh, different C I P requests, and all of them are building-related except for one, which is truck request for Department of Public Works.
Hi, as I told you earlier, Todd, when I communicated with you, um, I thought you did a nice job of looking, uh, you know, for, doing your research and your homework on them. They look like they're all valid requests to me. I wouldn't have any trouble. Though I do understand that it's about four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars and change, you know, of requests, but they seem to be valid.
Typically, the, uh, the fleet requests are, are, uh, done through a minimum lease on a five-year program, which is part of our fleet cycle, cycle. Uh, the others can be funded in different ways.
Obviously, that truck's seriously, seriously needs to be reclaimed.
Twenty years old.
Yeah, yeah, twenty years old. So, that, that's really the biggest ticket item right there, correct?
Yep, correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine. The only question I guess I have is the blacksmith shop. Do we own that?
Yeah, we do too.
Town building.
Kinda like the, um, Legion Hall or-
It, it used to belong to Somersville Manufacturing Company.
Honestly, the, that blacksmith shop is the greatest building that we have because it is the lowest maintenance building the town owns from my perspective. Um, other than when it has, was run into three times by people under the influence. Before we put the guardrails on it and we had to rebuild the wall, uh, the, uh, the, the Congregational Church in Somersville has the meaning of that building. And their women's club brought a tag sale of that, they, they run money for the volunteer organization in the summertime. Um, but it's a historic building, embedded in all buildings.
I didn't know that, though. That's the one we were talking about, our, our one dollar a year for usage.
Yeah, it's the one dollar a year lease with, with the church.
It was built in the early nineteenth century.
Yes, it, it is, it's-
It was legitimate blacksmith shop as well.
Correct, it was an old blacksmith shop. And the roof is extremely damaged, moss is growing out. It's leaking now. They keep calling me, you need to replace it.
Can you send me a copy of the lease, whoever has it?
I don't.
I don't know.
I don't even know if one actually exists.
It could be pretty old, these, right?
I think it pretty-
Town clerk should have it.
Well, I think we need to find out, 'cause I think we need to, if we're leasing it, I think we need to make sure we have a lease.
That's what I've been told.
Yeah, I know they just come in randomly and they give me a check for a dollar every year to-
Okay.
And I'm like, oh, okay.
Well, let's, let's follow up.
I don't think the church would have a trouble making a legal agreement, do you?
I think we need to, for liability reasons and everything else, to make sure that, okay. If we have a lease, we should have a lease.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, but I think, Todd, good job. The only other one I would have a question about is the tax office duct cleaning, um-
Yeah, that one-
Well, my question is, is, I mean, is this something that's gonna wait, or are we gonna do this sooner? I mean, if it's causing a health issue and the party departments have to come?
Well, this has been going on for over a year. Um, and initially, we had the party department come, but they asked me because they found nothing. We've had two, uh, air quality engineers in at different times testing that there, and nothing's been on, found that's untoured. We did put in air purifiers, portable air purifiers, which seems to have health. And it's, it's not all the time. It seemed to be when our HVAC company, we come in and service the HVAC, it disrupted the dust is what I'm guessing. And we're having them do that only on Fridays now, so there's no staff there and you have the whole weekend for the cell. But because of that, we think it would be a good idea to have the dust cleaned. It's not an urgent matter, so it could be in the next fiscal cycle with C I P.
But it is an air quality issue that does affect human health.
It is, except that we have to be early to come up with it.
Yeah, we can't, we can't say that there's anything wrong with the air, 'cause we've studied it and-
But an engineer is recommending this as the next step. And for instance, you're an engineer, air quality engineer, recommend having the dust cleaned, thrown out.
Yeah.
Basically, because they couldn't come up with anything.
I guess my question is, though, why are we doing a C I P? Why don't we do it as operating budget?
I agree.
As part of our, I mean, why don't we pull this from C I P?
That, that was gonna be my thought.
And just fund this as an operating expense.
We could, or we could take it out.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, it's not really capital, 'cause it's, it's maintenance.
No, but it's a capital in nature because it's over five thousand dollars.
Right, I, I, I would say it's, it would just get added to your building maintenance operating budget.
Yeah, let's do it with this year's current funds, or next year's funds, but- So, let's pull that one if you're okay with it. We'll do, we'll fund it, but under operating expense.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, we don't fund cleanings typically, the capital.
No, I mean, that's fine. I just, you know, that's, if, Brian, do you feel that's a better way to go? Is it-
No, I think it's, I, I was, I was thinking the same thing when I, when I was reading these two. I figured that it's not really a capital cost, and I thought when it landed at C I P that they were gonna say the same thing.
Okay.
So, do you wanna do it this year or?
I mean, if you've got it in your maintenance budget this year, if you're tight, I would, we'll add-
We could do a transfer for you if we need to. If it's a health and safety issue, or it's affecting employee health, and we had an engineer recommend this as the next step, or, I mean-
Yeah, let's look at it on Monday, Todd.
Look at it. You guys take care of it, and then if you need our support, we'll-
We can approve it and you guys decide where it comes from. Is that all right?
There may be existing money, though, so.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying, they'll, they'll, they'll decide.
We'll look at it on Monday. We'll figure out, and we can get something, a transfer in front of you.
So, I make a motion, the board of select would approve, um, the C I P request for police department security cameras, town hall improvements, blacksmith shop roof replacement, fire department underground oil storage tank monitoring system, fire department roof replacement, and combination snowplow sander dump truck replacement. And refer these to the C I P committee, um, as presented by, uh, the Public Works Director.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thanks, Todd.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Uh, next request is to install a disc golf course at Field Row Park. This is, uh, at the impetus of the, uh, rightfully service director, Maureen Purcell. She obtained a grant, uh, for this, uh, to install approximately seven thousand dollars from the Hartford Foundation uh, to install a disc golf course, uh, in Field Row Park in the ninety percent, which would be on the, uh, hiking or walking trail, if you will. It's in the twenty-eighth of a forested, uh, property that's adjacent to the park, that's town property. Um, so, it won't impact any ball fields or anything like that. Uh, something that, uh, we've been looking at for a little while, really, Maureen, is we're looking at, other communities do it. It's very well-received. Uh, we've been working with a vendor over about eight months to come up with a, a design. This would be a nine-hole, uh, disc golf course, which until she told me about it, I didn't know anything about.
Oh, it's so much money.
So, very popular, yeah, they're very-
So, much money.
So, some of it's on their town leisure time.
The only cost, the town, the D P W's in kind service and the concrete, so there's, uh, pallets for two bags of concrete. We'll do the installation, working with the, uh, the vendor who will, will design the course and, uh, provide the, uh, the materials. Um, so, it's kind of a win for the town at no cost with the, uh, the generous grant from the Hartford Foundation, the new amount of seven thousand dollars.
So, I got a question.
Yep.
The, um, to construct, the, the, the design portion is seventeen hundred dollars according to that agreement.
Right.
And then the construction is sixty-six fifty with a potential add-on of four hundred. So, that's the seven thousand right there, construction. So, where's the seventeen hundred for design coming from?
No, construction, if you look at the, this page?
Yeah.
You've got, uh, I think we're doing the mama bear. The seventeen hundred is in, is in that.
It's in there?
Yeah, seventeen hundred, to the, all the way to the right, the construction is sixty-two fifty.
I see it. All right, okay, I missed it, okay.
So, there's design and construction on total seven thousand.
Well, it's less than seven thousand. The design and construction is sixty-two fifty.
With add-ons.
And you always expect something.
Yeah.
Where, so, hold on, where?
If you're on the colored shape, the mama bear, the middle, on the colored page.
We don't, I don't think we have that.
I do, I have, I have it, I have it.
Right there, yeah, okay.
Where's it referenced in the contract document, though?
You went right past the contract.
Here we go.
On page two, compensation designer, payment.
Yeah, the seventeen hundred's in the contract.
Where's the rest of it? This is only for the designer then?
Yeah, but then there, then this guy, any construction.
In a, in a item, um, 'cause you buy the, uh, the items in the, it's a poorly, wait, the way they do this is poorly.
See, the items seem to be added up into the-
So, you, you end up buying all these materials and who installs them? You?
We do, yeah.
You do.
All right.
It's on a post.
Well, it looks like it's total seven thousand fifty, right?
It's a three-foot tall basket.
Six thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Change, I guess.
Right.
Plus four hundred for the recommended add-on.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine.
We don't know what they are yet.
This looks great. I think it's good. Um, I mean, I guess we can do a contract, it's a small amount, I'm fine with it. Um, my only edit's the contract, we need to make it page four, um, in jurisdiction. We gotta just change that to Somers. Talon County, Somers. You know, the jurisdiction-
Oh, yeah, the Fairfield County.
Yeah, the jurisdiction should be all right. I mean, it's where the job is occurring.
All right, yeah.
So, just, I'm sure they'll agree to it. Just make that edit and then-
Yeah, it certainly happened to be nice in Wright County, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, just have them-
Yeah, none of us thought that. And actually, the town attorney did review, review this as well.
It's not the end of the world. Just sometimes they'll try and make it the jurisdiction of Delaware or Nebraska. That is a problem, but, yeah.
No, I'm sure this is just for a little bit.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, I make a motion, we'll approve it, um, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Sell the dump truck.
Uh, yes, we, uh, recently took delivery of a new, uh, dump truck, smaller dump truck for the park. Uh, so, now we have one in excess. We've taken it out of service and we're requesting permission to sell the two thousand and four F three fifty uh, dump truck standard by way of Gov, GovBid.com as we have with other equipment that we have.
Which is an auction, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's an online auction. We usually put them up for ten days. Um, and we control everything, which is why I keep the peace and so the payments come through.
Yeah, and we don't pay the commission on it, the buyer pays.
Yeah, the buyer pays everything.
Okay. And the proceeds will come to the general fund?
Capital fund.
Capital.
They go back to capital.
Do we have a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, sale?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the, uh, sale of the, uh, two thousand and four F three fifty D P W truck.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, and finally, is the request to change our process for accepting waste oil at the transfer station. Um, we, uh, currently accept waste oil, and what happens is people drop it off in front of it. We have a covered, uh, canvas-covered area with, uh, bins, uh, fifty-five gallon drums. It's, it's locked, but people tend to drop it off there. If it's written on, you don't catch them. Um, and what we've been dealing with the last several years is that contaminated waste oil. There's no way that our, uh, staff would know that.
Yeah.
Contaminated gas or D P D, yeah, there's no way they would know it. It has to be tested. Um, so, what happens is our vendor comes, our normal vendor, which is Safety Clean, will come, they'll test it, it's contaminated, they won't take it. So, then we have to contract with an environmental services company to come in, they do high-level testing, send it off to lab. That comes back with a report for each drum, and then depending on how badly it's contaminated with what, depend on, uh, how much it costs us to get rid of it. That's one piece is the financial. The other piece is, because this has been happening several years and it's a large quantity, um, if it continues, the E E P will, uh, classify the town of Somers as a large generator of hazardous waste, which brings on a whole another, uh-
Sign up for regulations, yeah.
And cost, and probably staffing or having to hire consultants to deal with it. And this is for people to drop off their waste oil free. I don't really see the whole benefit. I think we should follow a model of what other towns do, which will have an annual outreach. We'll hire the vendor like E E S I to come in and, um, they test it immediately when you bring it there. You have to have a photo ID. You have to tell us what it is and they'll test it. If it's contaminated, they won't accept it.
They can tell whether the PCB's in, immediately?
Yeah, there's a test they can do immediately, but, uh, it's not as high-level as going to the lab. But they can test it with their people and their equipment, especially with equipment.
Is it, is that gonna be at the yearly one, any?
No.
Oh, no, that's-
Our, our, our other hazardous waste does not accept waste oil. Our, our, our other hazardous waste does not accept waste oil.
Okay, I didn't know, 'cause you know how, we do it one year here and one year instead, yeah, okay.
Right, right.
So how would the annual collection work?
We would run it at the transfer station probably on Saturday, kinda think of the way we do paint here, we'd probably put it over there, and we'd have them set up their tent and they would have their truck there and we would publicize it, everybody, if you want a bridge, you can. Really, we encourage people to change your own oil, the people you buy the oil from, your paint oil, they're supposed to take the waste oil back.
Yep.
Most of them don't want it because of the cost and the hassle, but by law, they're supposed to, so I would encourage people to change your own oil, to bring it to wherever you bought it. Um, it's, it's a burden for us, I don't see any reason we keep doing this.
What other towns do?
They, they do an annual or semi-annual, they hold a.
I mean, Ellington, Stafford, East Windsor, Enfield, I mean, how many towns have you talked to?
Most of the other towns that I talked to on the list are, don't, they don't take waste oil like this. They either go collectively or they do it annually or semi-annually themselves.
How much oil do we take in every year?
Hmm, good question, I don't know that.
I mean, it's a lot?
Uh, well, right now, yeah, so about ten fifty-five, so, you know, five thousand gallons, um.
That's, that's a lot.
Over a year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's 'cause it's free and it's, I can just drop a gallon of water, it doesn't even have to be marked and walk away.
I'm just concerned, I mean, it seems like every time we make a change at the transfer station.
It impacts residents.
Well, this is a question about, this is a question about controls of, uh.
We hear a lot about that.
Sure we will. Right. Well, if it wasn't contaminated, if it was used waste oil without it being in it, it wouldn't be an issue, but we have no way of controlling it or testing it.
I think as long as we make it clear what we're doing, you know, so people know that we do have an option.
Right.
And that they're gonna have to keep, you know, that's what I usually do with the other stuff, I just keep it for a year and then I'm gonna have to bring it, you know, we do that yearly pickup.
Yeah.
And I, I just take it to that yearly pickup, and if people know that we're gonna have a yearly pickup, you just save it, you know, in your garage or whatever, and then.
Can we, can we make, push this out till like effective July one to give people some time?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
And you'll be.
Give people an opportunity.
I mean, I trust your ability and judgment to do this, I think we just need to make sure we communicate this well, we give people some time, kind of explain it, you know, 'cause, maybe this, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna not do it immediately, I was going to make signs up and put them on the waste oil bin and say effective whatever date.
I mean, what's a good date?
I think July fiscal year is probably.
Gives us months, yeah.
Sounds fair.
Selectmen and Mayor, right, raised a good point, that anything we do at the transfer station is, uh, sensitive and needs to be treated as such with regards to the public, so.
Okay.
That's good, that's great. So we have a motion on this?
Yeah, I can, I'd be happy to make a motion to, uh, approve the request to change of our waste, uh, oil collections.
Effective?
Effective, uh, July first to twenty twenty-three.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Todd, for all your hard work.
The, uh, Emergency Management Director, Mr. Reynolds.
All the way at the end of a two-hour meeting.
I know, I.
I did that on purpose, like.
Uh, Todd Reynolds, Emergency Management Director, uh, just looking for a resolution for you guys to sign, uh, for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is the annual grant you get from the state, uh, it's approximately eleven thousand dollars of the, the cost share match for you guys, so it's about five thousand for the town.
Five thousand cost to the town?
Yeah.
And the state comes up with.
Sixty-two for the total grant and it's five thousand nine hundred thirty-one twenty matching share for the town and state. Uh, we've participated in this in years, I just need page five, I just need to admit it that you guys approved the resolution, that it's gotta go to Dave Marty to get, uh, sort it out.
What are we gonna buy?
Uh, we got a list of things we're looking to do, we have, uh.
P P P gear.
Did I go put it in there?
I don't think I. Um, so we're looking to get, um, we have some issues in our T O C with cabling for the radios, we're looking to rerun cables from the fire department to the cell tower, um, a new dual-band portable radio for myself and the chargers and batteries that go with it, and, uh, as part of the P P E, we're looking to upgrade bathrooms as we go along, as we go along, and touchless, um, faucets and mirrors.
Um, I do, moving all the records on this stuff, 'cause it's now, we now.
This is, this is a grant that we've, uh.
Unfortunate.
Applied for in the past, but never received, is that correct?
We, we get them, but it's, it's, your grant is, is off from the fiscal year, so it's a little different, so it's a little behind.
Well, it falls on federal fiscal year, right, is this a federal fiscal year grant?
Um, I believe it is a federal fiscal year.
Yeah, it's October one.
And it hasn't, several years gone by since.
Doesn't matter, man, we get audited in July.
Um.
Why?
The last one we should have got paid for was nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one.
We have not been paid since twenty eighteen.
Okay.
What do you mean we haven't been paid since twenty?
We haven't received the grant.
We received the actual. So where, where's, where's the money supposed to come from?
It's a grant receivable. It's, it's a federal, federal dollars, yes.
It is a receivable, yes.
Right, I mean, did we submit all the required reports, I think we had this conversation.
Yeah, no, I, I have the date here and my conversation with the lady at the state, um.
And what are they saying?
They're saying that, uh, we're waiting, waiting on the subgrant for the twenty-one, twenty-two, and the twenty twenty-one, so that's at the state level. We should have gotten the twenty, nineteen twenty should have been submitted.
You didn't get a wire for that?
Not to my record, no.
I'll follow up again with her.
Well, I mean, it's a big problem too for finance, the backbeat and all that stuff.
Right, and we budget annually, a part of our emergency management budget is this. And we're gonna spend the money and we spend it, you know, for years and then.
But your audit's closed, and how do you book revenue from three years ago, you've already paid for it?
I, I set up receivables every year. Is there any possibility that maybe Mr. Courtney, I'm seriously, seriously, could he help us with this?
I didn't want to do it, sure.
I would just see if we can give him a, his office call, see if they could help, uh, you know, expedite this, and, you know, he, he's, his office is usually very helpful. So just maybe, you know, I believe so, yeah. You know, where's, where it could happen, they could ignore you, but I don't think they will.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Bob, it's a good idea, um, the right one, though, would be Kurt Vail, so I think this is federal pass-through to the state, if I, I think this is gonna be the state that will hold up.
Yeah.
So I think you're right, though, I think contacting reps is a good move, but I think Kurt Vail would be the move.
Well, as long as we can get some action, I, I don't care who you wanna talk to, but, you know, we gotta talk to somebody that's gotta help us, we can't continue to keep doing this.
Yeah. I agree. No, you're right. No, you're right, you're right. No, you're right, Bob, it's a good idea.
I, I mean, you could call Courtney and ask him, if he says, talk to your state rep, go ahead, but, you know, you can talk to Kurt too.
It's federal.